Okay, it's seven o'clock now. We're gonna call it Monday, January thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Select board meeting to order. Uh, first item is to set the agenda. Does anybody have any changes on the agenda? I don't think I have a motion to approve. The agenda is written.
Second.
First made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is a few of open public comments. There's a limited sheet back by the Christmas tree there that if anybody's not been here before, wanna read it, see how the meetings are conducted, they're more than welcome to. Um, so any, uh, select board announcements? The public announcement? Barbara?
Um, there were all here tonight. Um, I want to thank my longtime assistant, Susan Lyons. She's been with me for nine years and her goal is to work for me down in town. She retired in December, but you can still see her around. Um, she'll be on sedentary and she was coming out of the matches. So I thank you so much. You're really nice to meet you. And I want to introduce to you my new assistant, Jasmine Coyle, who some of you, most of you know. Welcome aboard, Jasmine.
Any other public announcements? Yes, sir.
Um, just wanted to introduce myself. My name's Matt Walker. Uh, I'm running for cemetery committee. I'm here tonight hoping to get some signatures for my petition. Uh, I was appointed last year, did the summer last year, but I'm gonna handle others and plan to run for the four out of five year position that's due in March. So I'll be here, hoping to pass this around at some point, get some signatures from our registered votes.
Uh, Fast Squad and, uh, Barry Town Ambles is serving, not here tonight. So next item will be, uh, commissions, committees, trustees, and other board announcements. Next item is approval of the warrants, uh, SB twenty-two, one-two-seven, one-two-eight, one-two-nine, and one-thirty. I'll be accusing myself because some have to do with my work, so I have a motion to approve of those.
I have a motion.
First made second. Any discussion?
I got a couple of questions, um, real quick.
Which one?
Um, two-two, one-two-nine. The Lafayette, um, Gabriels, was that paid by the insurance on the nighttime truck?
That is the one that's going to be paid by the insurance. It's expensive, yes.
Okay, and just, just, I didn't know what this last one was. Wilmington Trust is what three large number amounts right at the very end of the same one. Uh, yeah, two-two-nine. Twenty thousand, three hundred, twenty-nine, uh, twenty-one dollars, fifty-two cents.
That is the water box.
Okay, I just didn't know what it was. I don't know.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is, uh, approval of payroll warrants, uh, for twelve-fifty and twelve-twenty-nine and one-twelve. Got a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Second. First made second. Any discussion on the payroll warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay, next item, select board meeting minutes, uh, from time twelve-nine and twelve-sixteen. Have a motion on that?
Motion to approve previous minutes, please select board me, twelve-nine and twelve-sixteen.
Your second?
Yep.
First made second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item is, uh, town mayor's report. Jackie?
Okay. Uh, dilinquencies as of today, uh, taxes are at a hundred ninety-seven thousand, thirty-two dollars and sixty-one cents, waters at eighteen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars and fifty-nine cents, and sewers at twenty-six thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and seventeen cents. The, under the water and sewer department, the hillside tears, water and sewer line project, um, has been completed. They will be, the contractor will be coming back in the spring to, um, seed mulch. Um, so that has been repaired. We did have a water leak on New Year's Eve, um, at the intersection of Garden Street and Route fourteen. Um, I want to thank, uh, a member of the road crew that assisted and for excavation for coming in and getting it all put back together. Um, we found out at ten minutes of four in the afternoon that we had the water leak and it was pretty much all put back in place by nine o'clock that night. So thank them because the dead had a huge New Year's Eve party down there and they were out of water for just under an hour. So, um, thank you for that. Guardrails, um, on Gilbert Road, guardrails are in at Gilbert Road at South Hill, Major Culvert, McGlynn, Menard, Falls Bridge, and McGlynn, Menard, I'm sorry. Gilbert Road, South Hill, Culbert's, uh, guardrails are in. McGlynn is not yet. Menard is, Falls Bridge and Baptist Street are still pending. Under FEMA, uh, sign up, all December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, um, flooding projects have been completed and all paperwork has been submitted to FEMA for reimbursement. Um, they've all been obligated, so it's just a matter of FEMA pushing the paperwork to the state and then, um, funding coming back to the town. Um, all of the July tenth, twenty-twenty-four projects have been completed under FEMA. All of the paperwork has been submitted and that is, um, they've all been obligated and we're just waiting for the, the payments to come in from the state. Um, all of the July twenty-twenty-three FEMA flood has been reimbursed to the town, including the CATC, uh, which was thirty-six thousand dollars for the administrative cost. That was the final thing that we were waiting on and that check came in last week. So that is all done. Uh, the draft audit, the single audit for all the, uh, FEMA and the ARPA money has been completed. Um, and the regular audit for the year ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four has been completed. Um, Jen and I are reviewing that with the auditor and I should have the finals by the end of the week. Under the fire department, engine one should be, um, back in service by the end of January, the first part of February. They had a little, um, delay due to one of the employees having, um, a death of the family, so he, he was out, so he couldn't finish it up. So they're just waiting on, um, the seats to be installed and a couple of other minor little things, but that should be, um, back in service by, uh, the first week in February. The town report will be ready to go to the printer on Friday. I'm just waiting on the school board this morning. They're going to be approving that Wednesday night, so I'll have that on Thursday. I'll have the auditor's letter, um, by Friday and, uh, just waiting on one other report. I know it's been written. I'm just waiting for it to be submitted and then, uh, once you sign the warranty tonight, then all of the towns and the town report will be completed.
Anybody have any questions for Jackie? Okay, move on to new business. Uh, first item is Seaver Ball Field property transfer. Does that sound clear?
Sure, okay, if I, if it's okay, and I give you guys all this, this is just from Steve. There's one for you. And if Jack just wanna pass them around, there should be five coffees there, plus one for Jackie. Thank you.
I think that we would, first time we've seen this.
No, no, it was discussed a few weeks ago and the two attorneys did discuss it. And that's a final opinion. It was actually quite, it was quite a few weeks ago there that, that the two attorneys were discussing it through Jackie. So this is, this is the final, this is the final letter that Steve came up with, um, about a week and a half ago. And Jackie had asked, my wife, this is Kaiza, my wife, by the way, had asked if we could hold the year because her and Jackie had had a discussion in regards to the property. And, um, she, uh, as, as owner of everything that we all own, uh, she has a, after talking to Steve herself, has a issue with buying the property herself also. So the, the issue that you ran into with this is the, it's the number one issue for us is when we, when we go to sell the property, either we left with a separate piece, it's a landlocked piece of property that in perpetuity would have the tax built. And if we combined the deed, as you can see there, uh, we would have a deed that was not clean. And there was no warranty deed being offered because it's the town. So what it would do for us is saleability, if we kept them separate, would not change at all. But our plans are is to sell it at some point, um, or leave it to my son, but plans would be probably to sell it. And if we combine the deeds, we would be the way to do it. Otherwise, I've got a tax for a piece of property that's worthless, people and law. If we combined them, then it is one hundred percent, uh, his opinion. As you can see, this had nothing to do with us, uh, as far as this opinion, but his opinion is, is that any townsfolk, not the town, we're not much worried about the town coming back on this, of course, but as we know, Ivan and the great, great, great granddaughter came in when we tried to remove the ball diamond. I could imagine if Ivan or any, any resident of Town Williamstown said, you just sold a piece of our recreation field. And, and my wife, my wife has an issue with, with purchasing the property anyways, but.
No one else has ever asked anybody else to pay for that?
What she's referring to is the, the property was altered in nineteen seventy-one by Mr. Ray Duff. I didn't speak to the Duffs at all, but I did get the information from Peter Gilbert and Linda because I wanted to know what had been done to the property through the years. And as we're all aware, it had a, they, they actually were flooded there. And so the, the building itself had a door in the basement previous to us, versus again, then you could enter the, enter the basement of the building. And so at that point, that driveway into the building would have been accessed through the piece of property that we're in dispute of. And that property would have been eight-ninety over, um, where that pavement comes up now was actually close to the field level. Because you could enter into the basement of the building, whether it was for grain storage or what, at what, that point, what it was for. Historically, buildings have many, many different things. So Peter said, he goes, it, no matter what Peter said, he's not here, it's hearsay, but Peter said that Ray Duff had originally done the yard and had not altered the building. And then Peter had actually had the, the yard repaved and altered the building, including that berm that was put in to negate the back of the water. The water came in about five and a half feet in the basement and went here open. And so he put in a permanent wall, put in that berm, and then, um, sealed off that end of the building completely. He did a nice job. And I don't know what the excavator was, but, um, at that point, he said, probably, he said Ray Duff was either on the board or very good friends with people on the board at that time. So that's why nothing was ever said about that. Um, and then Peter said, I did a ton of work to the, to the property. And he said, whether or not it was, at that point, Peter believed it was his, which we since found out it wasn't, but nothing was said then. And then, um, obviously, we all wanted to solve this, but. Right, and our opinion is, is if the town does in fact want to, um, move the fence, do whatever you need to do, or dish your property to do, I will say over the years, dating back to nineteen seventy-one, there have been two previous owners, uh, the Duffs and Gilberts and now the Deseros. Um, and historically, as far as the town is concerned, not one person has raised an issue with the layout of the property. There has been a lot of owners of the property that have raised issues, but, um.
Well, I know for a fact you yourself has raised several issues. That's why, that's why we're here now. Otherwise, we wouldn't have known the difference either. So.
Well, I'm glad we do know the difference, but, but I also, I also am concerned as you would be with your properties, um, and you own a lot of them. If the deed was not clean.
Oh, I agree with that a hundred percent. Um, let me just talk to Jackie, man. Can you give us some insight on that? Have you heard anything about this letter?
This was brought to my attention probably, I would say, back in November.
Yes, absolutely.
That Steve had questioned it. And I contacted Nick Lowe and Nick Lowe felt that it wasn't an issue because of that little slipper isn't part of the athletic field itself. It's on the other side of the backstop. So there wouldn't be an issue with it. This is the first I've heard that this was the reason because when Kaiza and I had the discussion, the discussion was that she didn't want to pay nine thousand dollars for that slipper of property. And that she wasn't aware of what had taken place. Cause when I asked you, when are you coming in to sign the warranty deed? Because I got it switched from a quick claim deed to a warranty deed because that's Steve, what Steve had requested. And I had done that. So we got through having two needs drawn up, a quick claim and a warranty deed. And then when Kaiza came in, what, middle of December, I think it was, it was before Christmas, um, that she didn't want to pay that amount of money for that slipper of property. So then I asked her to come to the, to the meeting.
So I guess the town is prepared to give you a warranty deed like your lawyer suggested?
That's the problem. Steve, Steve says the warranty deed would not stand. I think that's the fine in it. He said they are not giving a warranty deed. The warranty deed would be from the town. It's not the town will worry about at all. If you read there that it's not the town that's gonna come back on, on the Deseros or whoever the, the future owners of the building are, it is the town's fault. What the, what the concern is here is we, we actually, you and I and I think a couple of the board members discussed is, and one of our last meetings was, can we even sell this? And that's, that's what Jackie, excuse me, if you don't mind me addressing Jackie, but, um, that's what the two lawyers had the biggest issue was, did the, did the board, not that the board can't make a decision, but did the board have the right to sell a piece of property that was in the deed specifically? Cause he's represented a couple of people actually in town, part of them being a religious, um, one of the churches, uh, where the deed was very specific. And he said they're gonna have a major issue with the deed. And then if you look down the problem, at the bottom, it's if one person, which we already had two that really the night they came in, we can agree or disagree on it, had any kind of claim as far as removing the ball field. You guys made the decision, hey, we don't want to open this follow-up. We're gonna keep the backstop open. I mean, I was here for all those discussions, but, um, I can't imagine. It just takes one person to say they had no right to sell the recreation field. And it's, this is not way bigger than either you nor I, but Steve said the warranty deed doesn't hold any ounce. Cause you would, there's no warranty from a town. We cannot go back on the town, even if you're saying there's a warranty deed. It doesn't matter because it's not, it's not the town, it's on the municipality. It's the claim from the town of saying that field was not anybody's to sell as a partial piece, other than it's supposed to be a recreation field in its entirety. And Steve said you, if you kept it separate, Chris, it's never gonna matter because it's a landlocked piece of land. Except for now I own a landlocked piece of land that has a separate bill on it. It's just, for me, I'm fifty-one years old and I personally don't need to own any landlocked piece of lands. As you're aware, my discussion was always say I'll combine the deeds and then we'll have a straight line. It does nothing like that. It actually gives me now a slipper of point zero-two-six-three acres.
Let me ask you this question.
Separate.
If we can get the two lawyers to agree on some language to a big, slickly word, are you willing to agree to pay what we agreed upon or is it?
She, she's not. What I, what I'm willing, what I'm willing to do is if, uh, I, I don't know, her, she, her opinion is put the fence up if that's what ultimately is gonna happen. We're aligned with that. We, uh, we have, we have another piece of property local that we have parking that will never end. It doesn't, it's not gonna affect it other than, um, for us, for us, I have an attorney that's been with me for now twelve to fifteen years and he's telling me, don't do it. And he also has said if anybody would like to call him at the end, you're more than welcome to. Uh, but that's.
Well, it sounds to me like you don't want to pay the nine thousand, but if they can figure out a way to do it, so it's all legal. Well, okay.
Yeah.
The board has no, no say whatever between you two. That's between you two.
All right, so, so if I have to agree with my wife, then no, we would not pay them.
Okay. So we've dealt with this thing long enough.
I agree.
From all sides. And I think I'd like to have someone make a motion that we, uh, when spring comes, if this is not resolved, in case they wanna change their mind by April first, we have a contractor come in and put the fence exactly on the property line. And this one's for, I don't want to pass this off to another select board. It needs to be dealt with now while everybody knows what's, what's what. Then it'll, it'll show me over forever, as far as I'm concerned, anyway. You agree with, agree with that? Yeah. Well, if you, well, maybe it's April first to, if you, in case you wanna change your mind, but come that time, the contractor will be coming in and put the fence back where it belongs, if the board agrees with that.
Well, the, the, that terminology, I just want to make it clear because, because we have the right to appeal the decision, no matter what, but the terminology is put it back where it was. So.
Put it back where, put it on the property line where it's supposed to be?
I understood. And, and I just wanna, I just want to be very clear that what the fence was going to be done, re-put up after the damage, I think was stated at that time to the town's vote by the town manager, Larry, that the fence was being put up where it originally was. So the only concern that I have here, and whether we can figure something out or not, my concern is at this point is based upon ethics. Since nineteen seventy-one, not one person said anything to the landlord or next door. So, um, obviously, I could have, I could have a, I could have councilman sign the deal and we get a deal and take it to the next select board and go on, but that'll definitely push it out. But I think the town's vote, we have a proper description of this and understand what's been going on because I, I would guess that the town owns a lot of property. And if they're gonna set a precedent that, um, it's really, it's really kinda sad. It's really kinda sad. And I, I agree from my end, from Peter's end, from Ray Duff's end, from your end, I think, I think it's sad that we're.
Chris, I want to remind you one thing. You're the one who started all this mess.
No.
You're the one said the fence wasn't the right spot. The shed wasn't the right spot, was on your land. The backstop was partly on your land. And come to find out, none of it was on your land. I'm not gonna worry. Do you want to tell you exactly what was going on? Jasmine? Wait a minute, wait a minute. One person got to.
Beneficial to put the, that on the property line when you could use the line that for parking for Seaver Field?
That's not, that's not anywhere, the parking has, is behind Seaver Field.
No, it didn't.
That's fair, but.
The only way into it would be through Mr. Desmond, right?
Started the issue with Pete Gilbert when he owned it, when the people were parking back there. And that was his issue and why I got.
I know. All you wanna do is clean this mess up once and for all, one way or another. If they want to, they want the piece of land for, goes through the parking lot, that's fine with us. We made a deal. All we're asking them to do is honor it. If we wanna make sure the legal language is good, sound, as much for our benefit as yours. We don't wanna go through this mess again. We just wanna get it done, one way or another. I don't care. It's nothing personal. It's nothing personal as far as I'm concerned.
Why didn't you ask Peter Gilbert to pay nine grand? Or the guy before that?
I don't think anybody even knew that town owned it.
Nine thousand dollars to give the town. I pay enough in taxes. I'm not giving you nine grand for a piece of land. It's not gonna happen.
There, uh.
The, the issue that, the issue that we have is, is a hundred percent why wasn't Ray Duff.
Why didn't all this come up before we spent all this money getting deeds prepared, surveying done, all this stuff done because we made a deal?
We spent the money, had two, two attorneys talk to see if you could sell the, sell the property. I think you see an opinion there that is a major, it's, it's a proven opinion, Larry. It's a proven opinion.
Yep.
The proven opinion was the day that Ivan and the great, great granddaughter came in proved the opinion. The opinion is, is that this gentleman, any of these folks that live in the town of Williamstown can say, we don't want that recreation field sold. And I'm sorry, but you aren't, you aren't model citizen number one. I'm not model citizen number one. Every one of us has enemies in this town. There is somebody that's going to say, why the hell did they sell that first desert? And then I got, then I got a legal.
I told you that we need to make sure that if we go through with a sale, it has to be ironclad, foolproof, and these two lawyers figure it out. If it can't, if it cannot be done that way, then it'll just go back to, we own the land, we're gonna put the fence on the property line. We've gone through too, so much crap over this thing since, for two years now, about who owns the, even back when Peter Gilbert had it, it was issue.
Longer, way longer than two years.
So anyway, it's time for it to get done, one way or another. But I'd like to see this board do, and this is my personal opinion, nothing personal, anybody on this thing, I don't want to pass this off to the next board, whoever may be down the road to deal with it. It's not on to law. It needs to be settled.
Not with my money.
Fine, I don't care. I don't care. It's nothing to me, one way or another.
Well, it is to me, it's nine grand.
I understand. But we didn't make the, we made the deal with your husband.
And, and I don't want to hurt him.
Well, I, we had no way of knowing that or whatever.
Of course you do. It's on the deed, but that's.
Well.
You, you said it. You didn't have any way to know that. So I have a couple of questions for you before, who's going to pay for the moving of the, of the fence?
The town.
See that?
Who's paying for the new fence?
The town's paying for the fence.
The what?
The town will have to pay for the fence.
Right. And, and you guys, you know the amount of that? Because I just want the public to be aware of that. What is the cost of doing that kind of?
I don't know. I don't know off the top of my head.
I think that would be pertinent information to have before we make a decision on that, don't you? I think that would be pertinent information to have before we make a decision on that, don't you?
Okay, so.
Yeah, I mean, but I mean, you're looking for a decision for this tonight to solve this before April. You now want two attorneys to argue, who knows what that's gonna cost both of us, what it's gonna cost us. Mine's three hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour, but.
All you're trying to do, pardon me if you take offense to it, is you're trying to get that piece of land from not. Bottom line, your wife don't want it, so we put, we put the fence back, we put the fence back. What's, we're, we put it where it should be, right on the property line.
The fence has never been there. Historically, the fence has never been there.
So why are you having such a fit about this spring saying that ours, the town's, town was on your property when none of it was? None of it. None of it at all was on your land. Would anybody be addressed to make a motion as I talked or make something different?
Do we want to get a price before we do it?
It's probably gonna be enough worth five hundred dollars. Don't worry, you know, moving and removing and removing the fence over there.
Yeah, that fence has got a lot of lilac in it.
You could be a safe fence.
He's gonna have to angle it and down. Yeah, we're gonna have, he's gonna have to add to it, but he can use what's there that goes from the lilac bush. It's gonna have to shoot back.
Nineteen feet if I remember right from that lilac bush.
And they go down and handle down to the brook.
It's probably need like twenty-five feet of new fence to make it work.
Right.
I make the motion, we put the fence back where it belongs and this will be done.
You want to give a timetable, resolve by April?
Where? Along the, would be along the property line.
Fence, new fence will be around the property line. So make that motion and we'll get a second. Move on.
I'll side that.
So repeat your motion again so we get straight.
That we put the fence back onto the property line.
I'll side the motion.
Okay. You want to give them any time to reconsider or lawyers come up some or is it?
I don't think we're gonna, I don't see it getting done by May.
Right.
You know, weather permitting.
Unless somebody, unless they want to follow up with the original deal.
By April first.
April first or May first or something like that, so.
Yep.
Have you got that?
Everybody hear, hear that?
Motion is made to give them to April first to reconsider the original deal? Or after that, will the fence company come in and put the fence on the property line? Where's?
Another quick question. As far as, we left the backstop there for a baseball field. Will you be leaving the fence up to actually set the configuration of a baseball field fence along that little bit? Right field line?
You know, on the west side, don't you, property?
The fence will go behind the backstop.
Yeah, behind the backstop, you know, you've got a fence there of course where the baseball field is. So if you move that, if you move that over to facing the building, then you, then you've now taken your baseball field fences and moved them back and angled, which of course would not be in proper configuration for fences for the baseball field.
I don't know. That's something we'd have to look at, Spaghetti. I understand, I think I understand what you're saying, but.
Oh, do you, do you look at?
It really has nothing to do with what we're talking about.
It had everything to do because we, we, we didn't take out backstop because Ivan and the, and the great granddaughter over here, they wanted, and we agreed at that point to maintain the configuration of a baseball field.
I think I got that figured out.
So the backstop won't move. It'll stay exactly where it is.
Right, right, right.
And the new fence, the new fence section that will jut back from the lilac bush nineteen feet to where the pin is and then go at an angle to the pin that's down over at the brook, behind the backstop.
Now, as far, as far as I can see with that being done, to keep the configuration of a baseball field, it doesn't have to be a solid interior fence off that backstop. It could be a painted line to mark out preference. That could be standing room for spectators and/or other team members standing back between that line in the fence. So it could still look like a proper ball field. There'd be a painted line for that line, you know?
Whatever the rec board.
Your first base line, correct?
Would be.
That would be, that's where the foul line is, correct?
Right.
Right. Base, first base and third base.
Whatever the rec board or select board come up with as far as configuration inside that field, the backstop is absolutely on the town land. The new fence is gonna be on the property line. That's it. I mean, what we do inside the rec field is irrelevant really to it. What we're talking about now, fenced on the property line.
Right. What's the variance on the property line down?
What's that?
What is our variance on the property line down? What is the variance one way or the other?
This is surveyed. There's a pin on each end. It's gonna be a straight line.
Right. Well, obviously it's not a straight line because half of that pin and half of the pin on the other side. So are we going to go off one side or the other, just like it now, like a prepared?
Well, the fence will be on our side of the line, on the town side of the line.
Excellent.
That's standard.
Perfect. Did you need, did you need access to get the pavement torn up? They would want pavement on the recreation field.
What's that?
You're going across a pavement, yeah. Did you want, did you want access ahead of time to tear up the pavement?
Do I want?
Should we agree upon that line so that we can actually have the pavement torn up so it doesn't ruin our property pavement? You're, you're not gonna want pavement on a pavement ball field would be my guess.
So if we, before the fence is installed, if we have a line painted on the line, is that sufficient for you?
Yeah, I'm just talking for you.
Well, basically, we wanted to ask if we need to, or gonna ask him permission to use his driveway to dig up any asphalt on the town side and I, I think we have, when coming on the town side, it probably.
Yeah, we'll stay on there.
I think we'll just do.
Make sure everything stays up, up for Mr. Deserow's property and excavation has been done on, to the town side and property.
Are you doing the excavation so it doesn't, it doesn't mess up our pavement on our side?
I guess, I guess if there's a solid decent asphalt, it can be cut.
Sawed, right.
It would be sawed and removed back to the town side, as any other contractor would or could do.
No, 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 I, I get that. I'm just making sure that you're, because we, we are buying, we are buying.
Right, no, no. And I'm, I'm quite sure we, I say we, as a town and the town people are not gonna want to stir up any more hornets nest with this situation. Everybody can continue on and get this job done properly and put just things done. It's too bad it had to come to this. I believe you and your lawyer were there when we walked the property and then agreed. And it's just too bad it came to this. But I guess we can keep everybody happy and I believe that all the excavation work can be done on the town side. Is that right?
No reason why it can't be.
Right. Did I, did I, was I correct in assuming that's kind of what you're covering? So it wouldn't.
The only other concerns that I have is, are you, are you changing the topography on your side?
Changing what?
Topography on your side because it has flood retention there, it has been designed. When you put, you know, put, you know, the building, you did put that berm and everything in. Are you planning on lowering that berm or anything? Because that's a consideration on my end. Are you changing the topography of the?
We'll just follow what, what contours are there with the fence.
We'll, he'll maintain contours like that.
We already kept the fence back, what, one or two feet from the property line along the east side of your building?
No, no, I know that. The thing is, is you built the berm on that end of the building, Larry.
The fence will go up and go back down.
It'll stay on the berm.
Yeah. It makes no sense to cut that berm out just for that section of fence. It's just a mess for everybody to deal with.
Okay. All in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Close.
What is the date? March first?
April first.
April first.
All right, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Well, that was.
Okay, next item is ATV, ATV ordinance. From what Jackie has told me, this is exactly the same as last year, nothing's.
I went through it.
Oh, okay, good.
Judy, everything is perfectly the same. I read it. It looked identical to the one we had for last year, so. Okay.
I have to commend you people. I've never heard one complaint or they go through by my shop. Never seen anybody horsing around and it's always been positive from what I've seen, so.
I've seen a lot of people on ATVs, but generally it's a creamy sound, so they use, they go through your program.
Well, that, yeah, that's where it comes right out to.
Larry, gentleman in the back there here.
I can't hear the discussion.
As we're talking about the ATV ordinance, it's basically, it's the same exact ordinance that was in place last year. It was amended at least once or twice, so we'll have to approve it with amendments. And what I was seeing was I haven't heard or seen any issues with anybody complaining about, you know, people horsing around or, or myself, seen it myself, the trail goes through my property, you know, and there's a center road, so.
I just couldn't hear that at all.
I was complimented on the, on the way people have behaved with them.
Try to keep right out.
Yep. Many years in the Soviet club, I know what you're up against. It's, it's not easy. All it takes is one person to screw, screw things up.
I know one, we live up on back of the, across Young Road and that's pretty popular. It's been good, yeah, it's been good. I mean, when it first passed, the first three weeks was crazy, but I mean, the past.
And it'll be a little crazy when it first opens up.
No, it's been, it's been good.
Everybody's got the itch.
Yeah.
Do you know where we live? If you go to the intersection of American Interior.
Yep.
The house that's right there on the left. That's where we live, so we do that.
Yeah.
Nope. Is that the brick house? I'm just trying to think. I know.
The brick house.
No, no, no.
Sorry.
Now, you got, you got the power plant?
Yeah.
The substation there?
The four-way.
Okay. The old house right here.
Now, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay, so before anyone makes a motion, this, this has the original one in here back three, four years ago when it first started and it's been at least one or two amendments to it, so you would have to make the motion to approve it as amended.
The amendments have been put into this one.
Yeah, they're in here.
Right, but it was a couple of times ago that we've already been on it, so we gotta, we still have.
Just approve it as, as have been, as amended.
As amended, okay.
Someone wants to make that motion.
From the original.
Right.
I would make the motion that we approved the Williamstown TV ordinance as amended.
My second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
I just want to reiterate what Larry said. You folks have done an amazing job. And I just had to talk with Dave today. We hear no complaints, you know, so thank you.
Yeah, we do have some FEMA, BASS money.
Everybody in the world, market trails and.
Yeah, there's a person stopped by about a month ago. There was a person stopped by about a month ago and talked about those.
I'd be the first one to complain when they start tearing up the road.
Yeah. We, we try to take pictures and get after them and threaten them a little bit.
They, they, I mean, every once in a while I get somebody that's a guy, but.
And we just see.
You don't have to have them, I don't want.
P and R, we just see them coming up BASTs. And we know that that's not a trail, but they're going very slow and you're anxious, so we don't complain about that. They're connecting to the trail.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Thank you for coming in. Okay, next item is approve the signed down meeting warrant. Something to me looks about like what we talked about. Could I have a motion on that? That we can have discussion afterwards?
I made the motion to approve the rate up of the annual meeting minutes for two thousand twenty-five.
Motion made in second. Any discussion?
Yeah, my only discussion, I sent Jackie an email today and I apologize because I actually got this email two months ago, so. You have surgery, but yeah, but just making sure, and I didn't even ask the guy to do this. This is from Vermont, it's a city to towns. It's pretty much the same, Article Two, it's almost identical except.
The article, Article Two came from the attorney at the league.
Okay, so.
The exact verb.
And I looked up seventeen BSA, twenty-six fifty-one, CB one, and it said specifically to this. So I just, I just want to make sure we're using the correct law. That's all I care about.
And the other things you discussed, there's nobody running for the Lister's office. And so Gordy's term is.
I legitimately didn't ask that many questions, I don't think, but.
Yeah, but what you, you said to me was, nobody's running for Lister.
Okay.
So if it doesn't pass, then the board will have to appoint two people in March. For the, but Gordy, Gordy's position is up in twenty twenty-six. But if this does pass, then an assessor has to be appointed within forty.
Right, and he's aware that he and Oliver, because it's Gordy and Peabody, correct?
Right, but they're.
They're aware that there's.
William and Peabody's terms are up in March.
Okay, so it would just be.
And nobody is put in a petition for Lister's office.
I just want to make sure, at least Gordy should know that.
He, he knows. We've had this discussion.
And the public knows that as well. Again, I'm learning a lot of things as I do all of this. And I think that was the only thing the guys said.
Yeah, no.
Whoever we hire, right, that's the only thing.
We had this discussed and discussion with Barbara, Barbara Schleslinger, who is from PBR.
Yes, and she is. Yeah, I looked up her, I just want to make sure the law's on it right.
Always good to be on my side, look.
Exactly. I'm not a lawyer, I can assure you.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Okay, next item is Barbara, you can fill us in on this.
Yeah, you're in your packet. I guess a special event, the pub is hosting a special event. I think it's a, I just, I just still worry about it. Yeah, just cider or something like. It's not kind of a, that is, they're interested in a new. A new product. So they're hosting, so the pub is hosting it for this.
I, I, I actually questioned it, Barb, and I, I called Pam and talked to her a little bit about it to kind of specify. What it is, is the Vermont Seltzer Company is coming out with some new wine products. They're having a tasting, tasting there at the pub where they're hosting it. And they will be giving out a few, you know, you know, people can test it and sell some of the stuff and it's just to see how the market and how people are gonna, you know, like, like it. And that's why they applied for it because they're extending it out and the pub is holding it. Basically like a wine tasting.
I guess I don't understand why it wouldn't fall under the pubs like the license, you have to have a special.
The pub is requesting it is this company that.
Right, the pub isn't.
It's a special event.
And.
The company is holding at the pub.
That's.
It seems like it would fall under the pubs liquor license, you know, they got one to fill.
No, actually it wouldn't because they're, they're just hosting it. They're using their physical building, their brick and mortar building for the address. This, this Vermont Hard Seltzer Company is actually using their liquor license as, and just, just, just basically like a wine tasting of sorts. I, I questioned and I had questions, so I called.
Okay, well, I have no problem. I'm just curious.
It just needs to be okay. So I'll sign up on it tomorrow.
Okay, so we're gonna make a motion on that?
Yeah, all make motion.
I'll side that motion.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say it's only for one day, so it's literally for probably sixteen hundred to twenty-one hundred hours. So it's not for very long. Barbara, thank you for doing the math, just so everyone knows.
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Okay. No, is this around the table? Spider? Scott?
Nope.
Clayton?
Good.
Yes?
No, this is, no duty, duty gentleman.
Jackie, is Adams Road and Heart Baptist on the paving this year? Paving schedule? Why are you smiling? You know, it's very.
I don't know. We got money left, left to do, but we've used up pretty much all the paving funds, I think.
Can we come to a, a pre-meets or what can we do?
I don't have numbers in front of me. Well, I don't have numbers in front of me and the board doesn't. We can, we can have that discussion, but we don't have the information tonight to tell you anything one way or another. You're always welcome to come back.
Let me call pipe and find out if the new estimate will be, and then I can bring it back to the board. And I can crunch some numbers.
Okay, we might not have to have it on the schedule.
No, I can, if I can find out that information, okay, I can, you know.
Jackie has your information, how to get ahold of you, right? Okay, we get, get close to that summer work program and budgets and stuff for that, we'll have her get in touch with you.
Just as long as we know it's going to be rebuilt at some point, you, I think it's been, one month, gotten used.
I understand.
Do my best.
We can't be influenced. We're not supposed to be, but anyway. We do appreciate your comment and appreciate your concern. We just gotta look at the whole picture, what needs it the most.
And like Larry said, I suggest if it needs to be a new business issue, because again, I know nothing about the schedule. It could be a good, good learning for me. I'll talk to Jackie and see how the schedule goes. I mean, they did the bottom of Brockton Hill, but it was, it's in desperate need this year. That was water.
That was, that was wet.
Now we're specifically.
Okay, if there's no, no session or motion today?
Thank you.
Motion made second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everyone, for coming.